All right, good morning. We are going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Pastor Aaron Krieger of Crown Heights Christian Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Blair Carcey of Girl Scouts Troop 3469. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. God of compassion, we thank you for each person sitting in this chamber. We thank you for each person on the City Council and for giving them a heart for leadership. I pray that you will help them lead from a place of love. Give them the strength to make the tough decisions, the peace in knowing that all decisions will affect some people, and the wisdom to ask for your guidance along the way. And please, God, give us all a heart to serve and love one another in everything we do. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and great job, Blair. All right, I call this regular meeting of the City Council to order, and I have one presentation, and I will make my way to the front under Office of the Mayor. There we go. All right. So we come here this morning to recognize American Deaf History Month, and we want to learn a little bit more about that, and so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, Deaf Awareness Month started in 1958 with the focus on improving human rights of deaf persons, expanding the instruction of national sign languages, access to education, and access to information technology and service. And whereas, the deaf population includes individuals born profoundly deaf who use American Sign Language, ASL, as a primary means of communication, and includes people with a range of hearing loss who use hearing aids, assistive listening devices, or other forms of amplifications and communication modes. And whereas, it is important to ensure that the people who are deaf have equal access to the many benefits and opportunities available in our community. And whereas, people who identify themselves as deaf belong to a cultural and linguistic community with shared language, social norms, rules of behavior, and history. And whereas, in 1944, the growing deaf population of the city of Oklahoma City established their first club operated by and for the deaf in Oklahoma in order to promote the welfare of the deaf and to advance the educational, vocational, and social interests of the deaf. And whereas, the National Association of the Deaf, NAD, has designated April 1st to April 30th as the celebration of American Deaf History Month. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as American Deaf History Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And I believe Councilwoman Hammond requested this to be recognized this morning, so I didn't know if you had a few words you wanted to share.
Yeah, no, I appreciate this recognition of this month, and I think it's just important to recognize that, you know, as a city, we've tried and worked on doing things to make our procedures and our processes more accessible for people who are deaf or have any other sort of hearing loss visibility, all those sorts of things, but that we also have a long way to go to make sure that things are fully accessible for folks and that we aren't disabling communities with the way that our procedures and our systems are set up, but that we're making things fully accessible for folks. So thank you, Mayor, for this proclamation.
Thank you. And a spokesperson has been nominated. And if she wouldn't mind introducing herself, and we'd love to hear from you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Fannin. I'm the president of the Deaf Club in Oklahoma City, so I just wanted to thank you for recognizing the deaf community that is in Oklahoma City. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for the Deaf Club. Thank you. Okay, we also have two appointments, one a reappointment, one an appointment under Office of the Mayor. Items 3A and 3B, they are to Economic Development Trust and to the Planning Commission. We could take these with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item four, items from council, this is a, item 4A is a public hearing regarding an ordinance related to motor vehicles. This was presented and described and discussed at the last meeting. Today is merely the public hearing. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
All right, well, we'll move on then and close the public hearing and come to item five, City Manager Reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got just the claims and payroll and sales and use tax report today. Just wanted to make sure, just give you an update on this. Still, sales tax came back with really strong growth again. We saw 29% growth in April, and so very strong sales tax check. We do have incorporated, we had incorporated the projection on this one. We had a preliminary number on this, so it's incorporated with the assumptions that we have in the budget amendment that you'll be looking at today, so we did address that. But again, sales and use tax combined so far for the years, $32 million over target. So, sales tax growth like we haven't seen in decades, and we'll be working through that with the budget amendment, incorporating the assumptions based upon the growth that we've seen in next fiscal year. That's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Item six is Journal of Council Proceedings. We can take items 6A and 6B together with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item seven is requests for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, starting on page 13, under item 11T1, there's one item on dilapidated structures, item I, 343 Southeast 42nd Street. We'll strike this from the agenda because the owner has repaired the structure. On page 14, item 11U1, unsecured structures. There's several. All of these will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 508 Davis Avenue, the owner has secured. Item J, 2634 Northwest 1st Street, the owner has secured. Item L, 1900 Northwest 10th Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 2307 Southeast 13th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 1701 Northwest 14th Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, 3600 Northwest 16th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 1424 Northwest 17th Street, the owner has secured. Item S is 2124 Northwest 20th Street, that's to re-notify the owner. And item W is 1445 Northwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. On page 15, item 11V1, abandoned buildings. There are several here. All of these, again, will be stricken from the agenda. Item K, 2307 Southeast 13th Street, the owner has secured. Item M, 1424 Northwest 17th Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 2124 Northwest 20th Street, to re-notify the owner. And item R, 1445 Northwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. And item eight is revocable permits and events. Pretty robust docket here, so item A is a memorandum of understanding with the OKC Dodgers Baseball Foundation and USA Softball for the OKC Dodgers Rookie League and the USA Softball Rookie League of OKC. I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Hammond?
It's amazing to see so many events on our revocable permits this meeting, and I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Okay, how do you wish to vote? Passes unanimously. Item 8B is a revocable permit with the National MS Society for the WAC MS Oklahoma City. That's on May 7th. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
I will move for approval as well.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 8C is a revocable permit with Northeast OKC Renaissance for the One OKC Street Festival on May 7th, and we do have Latoya Mason who has signed up to speak.
Well, good morning. I am Latoya Mason. I am the coordinator for this year's One OKC Street Festival Black Party, and we are excited to be in our seventh year, and I just wanted to personally invite all of you all, because I am going to assume the approval. So I am inviting you all. It is May 7th on a Saturday from 12 to 7:00. We will have, our big headliner will be JB this year. He just opened a pizza house on northeast Oklahoma City on 23rd Street, and this is going to be the biggest we've ever done, our Kid Zone, our lineup for the main stage, and we kind of just really want to get that out there, that we want all of Oklahoma City to see the best and the bright and the beautiful that's happening in northeast Oklahoma City. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I can't believe it's been seven years for us to have this One OKC Festival, so I appreciate Ms. Latoya for being here, and with that, I will move for approval, looking forward to May 7.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item D is a revocable permit with the OKC Public Tennis LLC to hold the OSSAA Girls and Boys State Tennis Tournaments. Steve Henry has signed up to speak.
Good morning. I'm Steve Henry, Director of Tennis, Oklahoma City Tennis Center, operated by OKC Public Tennis. First, let me say I really appreciate the connection, the partnership that we have in this public-private venture. It's really great for the tennis community. We're asking for this permit that would turn Pat Murphy Drive into a one-way street during this event, running from west to east to help with the traffic flow. First, I'll also say, while I'm not a historian, the facility was built in 1969, I think officially opened maybe in the spring of '70. This may very well be the 50th anniversary of the state tournament being held here, and it is truly unique in that all of the surrounding states that surround Oklahoma, none of them have a facility like this, and so if you were to go to Kansas, their state tournament is actually held in three cities, three classes in each city, and they barely get a crowd there. It is really something very unique and special that we have the whole state, all classes at one site. With, when we have great weather, we may have up to 2,000 spectators there, so it is, it's something kind of like the Arts Festival because all those high schools bring in tents that they congregate in between matches, and so it's something really unique to see, and I invite you all to come out and be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cooper?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, Steve, it's good to see you again. Thanks for inviting me out there to the park, to the courts last year. It's really special. It's really, really special what you all are accomplishing there, and I just wanted to say thank you for hosting it in Ward 2 in Rogers Park, which I think is a gem of a park that a lot of people forget about, but those of us who know it, love it. So I would move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E is a revocable permit with the Riversport Foundation for the Central Youth Rowing Championship, May 7th and 8th, and Tegan Malone has signed up to speak.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Tegan Malone. I just wanted to come say hello. Once you guys are finished with all these incredible events that are happening all throughout our city, please come down to Riversport and join us on May 6th, 7th, and 8th. We've got the Central Youth Rowing Championship, expecting a few thousand people to come down as usual. That will also be held in conjunction with the Pan American Championships at the Canoe Slalom Center over at the McLendon Whitewater Center. We are expecting great things out of this season, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I've been informed that this is going to be an event and also the addition of what's going to happen on the 6th with youth from the community and the surrounding areas of northeast Oklahoma City, with our Shay Cooper coming back to Oklahoma City to help kick off this weekend for young people, so I'm very excited about this and looking forward to what's to come, so I will move for approval.
Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item F is a revocable right-of-way use permit with the OU Health Stevenson Cancer Center to hold the Outpace Cancer Race on May 14th. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Nice?
Well, we're going to outpace cancer, so looking forward to this event on May 14th, so we can get rested from the previous weekend for this one, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 8G is a revocable right-of-way use permit with the Paseo Artists Association, Inc., to hold the Paseo Arts Festival, May 28th through the 30th, and Colin Rosebrook and Amanda Bleakley. Oh, hello.
I'm Amanda Bleakley. I'm with Colin Rosebrook, and we're here to present a revocable for the 45th Annual Paseo Art Festival, and we're back on Memorial Day weekend, which is May 28th through 30th, and it's going to be like it always is. It's going to be fantastic. We have over 100 artists, 18 food vendors, and 52 performers throughout the weekend, and we just look forward to everyone coming, and we invite you all to join us.
All right, Councilman Cooper?
Now, y'all know I would speak at novel length about how much I love Paseo and the work that Amanda and Colin are doing, but I won't. I'll just invite everybody to come see for yourself why I love Paseo so much. The festival is wonderful. Happy 45th. I think that's great, and I'm so excited about the street skate project that's coming because I think the next time people are there, it's going to be even more magical. So with that, I would move for approval.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. And finally, 8H, revocable right-of-way use permit with Plaza District Chamber of Commerce to hold the Calderon Dance Festival on May 21st, and Rachel Leonhart and Joel Parks have signed up.
Hi, good morning, City Council. Thank you for having us. I'm Rachel Leonhart, the Executive Director with Plaza District, and this is Mr. Joel Parks, our Director of Marketing and Programming. The purpose of this inaugural festival is to really pay tribute to some of the folks who made the Plaza District what it is today prior to what we recognize with plaza walls as well as lyric theater, and that would be none other than Shannon Calderon Primo. She owned Everything Goes Dance Studio, and I have a very special board member, Hichop Pous, who is a Governor's Arts Award recipient, that pitched this idea before Shannon's untimely death. She said, "I would like to have a festival that's accessible and equitable to all Oklahomans," and we took this very seriously. As headliner this year, we will have none other than Vincent Patterson, who is the choreographer for Michael Jackson and Madonna, flying in from LA, teaching a master class, teaching our Plaza District Festival patrons and Calderon Dance Festival patrons, who will show up and show out how to do Smooth Criminal. We also have five stages, and we have committed to over 50% of our budget to pay teachers, so we will pay over 24 teaching artists. We'll also have a culmination of a pretty significant-sized dance party at the end of the night. We anticipate roughly 15,000 in attendance based on past festivals of this size. Joel's worked tirelessly to figure out the programming with our planning committee. We've really got a who's who helping with this as far as the PR and marketing, and we deeply appreciate your support and hope that you come on May 21st. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and we thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond.
Well, it sounds like there's a little bit for everyone. This sounds really exciting and appreciate all the work y'all are putting into it. I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. On this docket, we have items A through J. Staff has not requested executive session on items H and I. We could take these with one motion.
I would be interested in entering into executive session on items H and I.
Okay. I guess, do we need to take separate votes or just one vote to do the executive session?
Let's do separate, I think.
Okay, all right. So first, we'll take a vote to go into executive session with item H2. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and then I2. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and so because we're in OC MFA now, and there are resolutions tied to these executive sessions, to keep it clean really, it is best that we go into these executive sessions now while we're in OC MFA. So we will now go do that to discuss items H1 and I1.
Yeah.
Like.
This is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's not.
She did.
Yeah.
I understand.
I did about a.
It's all.
Yeah.
I'm just.
She's.
Yeah.
You're.
Two for.
The color.
She's.
Yeah.
She's.
What?
We all.
They were.
Ready.
Yeah.
The dog.
Twenty-five.
She probably broke.
You know.
Was fired.
Yeah.
Interesting.
I know.
He's my friend.
Friends.
He's my.
Mine.
He's.
No, we were.
Because he said.
All right.
Fifteen.
Some of you.
I'm not.
He will.
Um.
Sorry.
Basically.
We.
So.
Kind of case.
I was.
For us.
I still don't.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Scout.
They got it.
Well.
Gracious.
Who's this?
They knew you were.
They want to.
They're hoping.
So.
Doing.
So.
Small.
Basically.
Right.
Councilwoman Hammond. All right, we are back from executive session. We are still in the posture of OC MFA. There is a desire to see items H1 and I1 voted separately, so Chair would entertain a motion to move those two items together.
And I just want, I'd like to, well, yeah, go ahead and make the motion. I'd just like to make comments.
Okay. Are we bringing up the, okay. We have a motion and a second, and Councilwoman Hammond wishes to make a comment before the vote.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, regardless of the facts of any of these cases, I just really continue to struggle with us paying for outside legal counsel. Specifically, I think, on the definition of our collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of the Police, in which we're required to pay for that defense when they are acting in the capacity of a police officer. That is such a broad definition that I really don't, I would like to see us negotiate change to, because, again, and I think I've said this before, the power balance of what police officers can do and what is defined as capacity of a police officer is just overly broad, and there's a power imbalance in us paying for legal defense, for them to continue to defend the idea that this was in the scope and in their capacity as a police officer. So I'm not against people having their day in court. I'm not against people having defense, but I just don't know if it's the place of the city to. I think that we need to rethink where the place of the city paying for that with taxpayer dollars is in all these situations.
Okay. All right, cast your votes. For items H and I. Passes five to two. And then we have the remainder of the OC MFA docket, items A through G and J. We could take all of those with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we will adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C, we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the city council, where we are on page four of your printed agenda, item nine, the consent docket. Only one item has a scheduled presentation, and that is item T. Is there any other item that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote, or a separate comment or question?
I would just be interested in hearing more about item U.
Okay.
Item A, B.
Okay. Okay, we'll take them in order then. Item T.
Aubrey McDermott, one of our assistant city managers, is going to give us just an update on this. This is another allocation that's consistent with the plan that was approved by council with the ARPA funds, and so Aubrey will give us an update here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey McDermott is Assistant City Manager. Here today to talk about rolling out another program that's funded with our city ARPA funds, this time to support nonprofits in the arts and cultural sector. Is the microphone kind of boomy?
Yep.
Do I need to stand back a little?
No, it's good.
So as you know, the city receives $61 million in fiscal recovery funds, and we expect to receive another tranche of $61 million more in May. And last September, council approved a funding plan that broke the city's ARPA funds into three major use categories, one of which is to respond to the negative impacts, economic impacts of COVID. So that category's total allocation was $37 million. It was further broken down into subcategory allocations, and 13.75 million of that was dedicated to small business and nonprofit assistance. So as you know, the Alliance for Economic Development is administering 11.25 million of that for the nonprofit and small business assistance program. And then two of our city's larger nonprofit umbrella organizations, The United Way and Allied Arts, are each receiving a million dollars. So this agreement before you today allows Allied Arts to support eligible cultural and arts nonprofits that need assistance to recover from the negative impacts of COVID. So you'll remember back when we got CARES funds in the first round after COVID, we had a similar process that the city had with allowing.
There's Amanda. Thought you were gone.
Allowing these organizations to help disseminate these funds to different groups. We had United Way and Allied Arts really step up to the plate and help those organizations. So we're doing something similarly, but under different programs that have slightly different requirements. So unlike before, when we had our, we had a CDBG coronavirus allocation of 300,000 that went to the Allied Arts organization. These funds through ARPA are different in that you do not have to be an Allied Arts member to qualify for the program. You do have to be a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(19) organization in Oklahoma City to be able to qualify. So the other difference with the ARPA funds is ARPA sets a timeframe in which losses resulting from COVID are eligible to be recovered, and that's from March 3rd, 2021, through December 31st of 2024. So through this program, funds can be used for replacement costs for employees that were lost due to the pandemic, for reimbursement of costs for mitigation, things like Plexiglas screens to keep people safe, testing costs that were incurred, reimbursement of costs for technology. A lot of these visual arts organizations had to go to virtual programming to try to keep people safe, or to purchase remote working technology for their staff. There's also a grant component for lost revenues, and the lost revenues could be equal to the amount of their COVID-related losses. So this agreement does establish some limitations or caps on that funding for nonprofits to receive up to a certain amount of funding. It's based on the size of the organization, and that's to help maximize the availability of funding so we can help as many groups as possible. And those caps are scaled so that the smaller nonprofits can recover a greater percentage of that organization's small budget than larger nonprofits. So although the Allied Arts program is focused specifically on supporting arts and cultural nonprofits, those groups could still be eligible to receive funding from the general nonprofit support program that the alliance is administering. They can't overlap. They can't apply for funding in excess of the amount. in excess of the amount that they had documented losses, but those two programs are still available for nonprofits to seek assistance. So, another difference is that we're not contracting out administration to a third party. Our planning department will be administering this contract under the management of Ryan Baker, who you'll get to know well. He's in a new position now, supporting a lot of our grant programs and EJA funding opportunities. And so, the alliance and the planning department's staff will make sure to coordinate on any applications that are received from the same organization so that we can make sure we can help maximize assistance to people and also stay in compliance. So, I'm really grateful for Allied Arts for stepping up and helping help the nonprofit sector with arts and culture. I know it was hit very, very hard by the pandemic and continues to struggle. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about this. And of course, Debra Center, the President and CEO of Allied Arts, is here to answer any questions. And Ryan Baker, I think, is also here. So, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thanks, Aubrey.
Thank you. All right then, item U. Councilwoman Hammond wished to hear a bit more about this.
Good morning. I'm Jared Shaded with Oklahoma City Homeless Services and the Planning Department. We coordinate homeless programs on behalf of the city with our nonprofit service entities. Very happy to talk about everything with regards to this program. This is one of our contracts for the Youth Homeless Demonstration Program. That program is a federal program that comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that will allow us to provide sustainable funding, some sustainable funding for homeless, a program for youth who are homeless in Oklahoma City and formerly homeless. It's a very competitive program. We've been trying for years to get it, and we finally obtained it late last year. I want to give a lot of credit to my staff for that, who completed the planning process for the application and completed the application. We are currently going through a planning process for this program, and we are doing that in partnership with the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse and our Youth Action Board. This particular contract will provide funding to them for those planning purposes and also allow the Youth Action Board to be compensated, because otherwise they're doing this voluntarily with their time. You will receive also several more contracts in the coming months for our projects as we are going through a very rapid-fire planning process right now to determine what our priorities are, put together a coordinated community plan, and get those RFPs out the door, and fund those projects based on the priorities we determine. And I can answer any questions that you have on that.
Would you please tell your staff, thank you, I know this is a very, very difficult selection procedure that we have to go through, and so that's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, it really is. We're very proud of it. I'm very proud of them.
Jared.
Jared, sorry. What are some of the uses we might see where this funding will go?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What are just some of the uses that we might anticipate here?
Well, I don't want to go too much into it, because I don't know what the contract, but I can give you an idea.
Okay.
I mean, some of the things we pointed out in the Strategies to End Homelessness in Oklahoma City, which, sorry, I forgot to mention, this is part of the mayor's strategies to address homelessness in Oklahoma City, obtaining this grant was, and that we received it immediately after that, which was surprising. But some of the things we can fund for this are your typical programs that try to address homelessness in Oklahoma City, which would be outreach, permanent supportive housing, things like that. It can fund all that, but also being that it's an experimental program and addressing youth homelessness is kind of a unique issue. It can also provide this opportunity to try to develop some services a little bit more experimental, such as, like our regular programs, like Emergency Solutions Grant and Continuum can't really fund, like, drop-in centers, and there's not a substantial amount of funding for outreach. This could possibly do that. And also, transitional housing is not usually offered with continuum programs. That's basically offering some services for housing for a limited period of time until the person can move into a more permanent unit. This program will allow us, actually, if it's selected by the Youth Action Board and the other planning committee, to be a need, that could also be an option for this. So, it's got a very wide range of use. It can address basically our current services that we provide, but also gives us a lot of flexibility to provide other services outside of that for youth.
All that sounds wonderful. When will council know what direction we're heading with these funds, that you all are heading with these funds?
Our coordinated community plan is due to HUD within the next several months, and they'll have to approve that. And then, we're putting out the RFP. We're actually having our first RFP meeting with providers on Monday. Based on what's allocated from that, from the decision-making committee, which should be the next couple of months, you'll have an idea of what we're going to fund. The contracts will follow within the next, probably, four to five months.
The summer is what it sounds like?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I guess maybe I should just have Boyd follow up our council office with you, or will you all be coming back to us?
We will come back, yes.
That's great. Well, thank you. It's just, I, almost no other issue besides your roads, I get it, we need to resurface our roads, but almost no other issue, like, haunts me. I just showed a documentary in my, one of my film classes, Paris is Burning, and y'all, seeing 13- and 15-year-old kids who've been kicked out of their house because their parents don't like them being LGBTQ. And keep in mind, as I've mentioned up here, and Jared knows it well, 40% of youth homelessness are, in fact, LGBTQ youth. Just think about those babies being on the street at night by themselves. Think of all the dangers they're going to encounter. And so, I really mean it. It haunts me. It haunts me. It's almost sometimes the first thought I have in the morning. So, I can't wait to hear what you're up to, because I just think the outreach work is so critical, that transitional housing, and then just all the things we talked about during the mayor's task force. So, I can't wait for those updates, and I can't wait to share those updates with the community, because sometimes people in the community, they're like, well, what are we doing about this? But you all have been doing, you know, yeoman's work. And so, I can't wait for those updates. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. So, who serves on the Youth Action Board with the department? Kind of what, who makes up that? Maybe not specifics, you don't have to, like, say everyone, but just kind of what types of people and/or representatives of organizations?
The entire, there's no organizations actually on the Youth Action Board. The Youth Action Board is comprised of, completely of, currently and formerly homeless youth, those who've completed programs and are now stabilized, and others who have not. We have ambassadors that actually work with our Homeless Youth Alliance and the Mental Health Association, Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, that have been working with us on this plan. All that information is taken back to the Youth Action Board for their input, in addition to the planning committees, which are your local service providers and other youth providing, youth service providing organizations outside of homeless services. So, and I don't want to name names.
Sure, yeah, I don't, yeah. Well, that's what my suspicion was, but I wanted to clarify just in case, because I think that's such a neat model of engaging people and not expecting them to just, you know, show up for a gift card or something, but, you know, or maybe, you know, a few gift cards or something that is compensating them for their time and their, the labor they're putting in and the input, you know, the very valuable input that they have based on their own experiences and trying to navigate some of these systems and what those gaps are. So, that's really exciting, that, that's a component.
Absolutely. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, and item AB, Councilwoman Hammond?
Okay, there we go. I was hoping to just get a date of completion. I know a lot of folks have seen the action, and I've actually received questions about when this will be completed, so hoping to get that from you, so everyone will know.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Eric Quinger, Public Works Director, Oklahoma City. So, the item that is, item AB is an amendment and a change order for the project that's at the USA Softball Hall of Fame. It's actually a connection trail to assist with some of the overflow parking needs when we have the annual College World Series there at that location. This will help connect Ranleton Park parking lots to the USA Softball Hall of Fame. So, if you've been on Northeast 50th, you'll see that the trail work has been well underway and is proceeding as planned. The part that is going to arrive tomorrow is the bridge that will cross the drainage channel, so it's expected to arrive tomorrow so that we can begin preparations for its placement. The amendment and change order is an increase of $163,788. It takes care of some excavation, and it also adjusts some of the piers that are being placed for that bridge, and makes a few other small changes just to complete that. So, the goal is to have all of that work completed before the actual College World Series. We anticipate being finished well in advance of that, just so that we make sure it's ready for the event.
Okay, another question that was asked of me, which I could not answer, and maybe you can help me, was the lighting on the trail. Do we know what the scape of that, the streetscape as far as, or the trailscape, if you will, of ensuring that it's going to be visible and safety for that, that bridge that we're putting over that area?
So, let me look at the plans and get that to you after the meeting. I don't, I don't know here at the moment what the plan is for all that.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. And, Mayor, if you don't mind, I apologize. I did have a couple of, asked for a couple others that I see here that I did not mention, AL and AM. And I'm just curious, and maybe our municipal council can help me with this. Is it possible to vote separately for these two with, to pass these with? Is it possible to do an emergency for these, to grant the easement? Or would we have to go in this manner?
AL and AM, excuse me. AL and AM are, one's a grant of a permanent easement, one's an acceptance of a permanent easement.
Yeah, I believe so.
I don't know if you need an emergency. No, you don't need an emergency on those. Because they're, they're grants, so they're effective.
So, it'll be immediately? Okay. I just want to make sure, because the folks that reached out to me, we weren't positive, so I appreciate that clarification.
Yes, it's only on ordinances that you need the emergency.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay. Well, that concludes.
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes?
Could I ask Aubrey a question?
Sure.
On her presentation?
This is in regards to item T?
Yeah, the, the funding to the Allied Arts.
Uh huh.
I think you mentioned the recipients could be a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(19). So, c19s are veterans associations.
Correct.
Can you explain how they're involved with the arts and, and those types of activities?
So, I know that the 501(c)(3) and c19 is kind of a blanket rule that applies to several different of the ARPA funding sources. I don't know specifically, and maybe Debra does, if there are any military or veterans associations that have nonprofits affiliated with arts and culture. Do you know of any, Debra?
We are keeping it open to those organizations, but we also have several of the organizations who design programs for the veterans, guitars for vets. We have Paseo's Arts Program for veterans and their families, several programs throughout the city that our groups have designated directly for veterans and families.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, we're now ready to take a motion on the consent docket. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is a concurrence docket. We have items A through Q we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11 is items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 9500 West Reno, going from AA to I2. Joy Riordan, do you wish to make your, okay. Councilman's, oh, Councilwoman Young is gone. Anybody want to grab it? Want to take it, Bradley?
Did we have any?
No one signed up to speak.
Yeah, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item B, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 12700 Southeast 52nd Street, going from AA to RA2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you. Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
Is the applicant present? I just need to ask you one quick question. It's going to take you longer to walk down here than to answer the question, but do we know what the final, I assume you guys have done, like, some pre-plots on it, so, pre-plat. Do we have any idea what the final lot count is going to be?
Yes, we do. Mark Zitzel with Johnson and Associates, One East Sheridan Avenue. This is a rezone that's going to permit 10 two-acre lots south of the blue line on the exhibit, and the north side is two five-acre tracts. So, in total, it'll be 12 lots. And there will be a future plat coming forth once the engineering work is done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If no one else has any questions, I'll go ahead and move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1701 Northwest 12th, going from R2 to R4. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, is the applicant available to come speak? I just kind of want to hear a little bit more about the project and your plans, so everyone kind of knows what's going on.
Sam Gresham, 400 Northwest 23rd Street. I'm the owner of the property. Basically, it's a remodel of an existing, there's a church on the property. I want to put four units inside the church building. I have an existing parking lot. It's, it's what's there already. There's a proposed future additional couple of buildings, but I will be limited by the R4 requirements. The parking requirements for the city, I think, are going to be the hardest to meet. I don't think I have enough land for that. My survey has not been provided to me yet, so it's essentially just to get the four units inside the church building.
Wonderful. Well, I, yeah, I wanted everyone to hear that, because I think it is a really neat reuse of, of a building. That is really beautiful and, and kind of putting some new life in it, so appreciate that.
And Councilwoman Lori Wilson-McCoy has also signed up, but I'm not sure if she's with you or?
No.
Okay, okay, my apologies.
We can go ahead with any public comment.
She wrote Sam's name on it, so I was confused by it. Okay.
Yes, and actually, when I, since you have the three-day to file something, I have actually emailed Mr. Gresham. Just, I know, as a Realtor, changing to R4, that's a little bit vague. I actually live two properties to the west of this church, and after I spoke with him, he said he was remodeling the church to four units, and I think that's lovely. It's a beautiful structure. And I will say, since I do live, looking at this, the church, I live right on the corner of Gatewood and 12th Street. And we have been there four years. We moved from the suburbs, because we wanted to be in the city, where every home is different, it's unique, it has a vibe. In the four years we've been there, when we moved in, we had the apartments across the street, across 12th Street. They were built in the 50s, apartments to the other side of Gatewood. They were built in 49, fantastic. In the four years we've been there, there's a spud just south of 11th. It was, it was a home, and now it is a frame multifamily unit going in. On 11th Street, just west of Blackwelder, behind the existing apartments that were there, another property has been torn down, and there's another multifamily being built there. Right across from the church, of course, five homes were destroyed, and the Streebels have built, you know, kind of a high-density townhome-type structure, very different from the landscape of the rest of the homes, but that's there as well. And so, I just want a clarification that, you know, the church wasn't going to be torn down and another huge apartment complex going up. I understand the need for multifamily. I have no problem. We live in the city. But the, the density of multifamily going in just in that two-block area is insane. And there's a lot of areas to the east. You've got 10th Street, I mean, the whole area down on 10th Street, four blocks, from Kentucky to almost the 7-Eleven, that is empty, that to me is commercial, of course, but would be great multifamily. So, I moved in this neighborhood, I know my neighbors, I, I swap seeds with Wayne and Katie, I go down and I give food to Jerry and Perry when they're sick. Just to inundate this one little two-block area with multifamily is, it takes away the neighborhood feel. So, as I said, I, Mr. Gresham emailed me, it's perfect, I'm so happy he's saving the church. I think originally there were some townhomes that were going to go buy. I think originally there were some townhomes that were gonna go behind there, which wouldn't quite look into my backyard, but I was just wanting to clarify if there was anything else, or the height of the structure, and from there, so. Just to let you know, there's a lot of multifamily going in my little intersection. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, well, I know Lori and I got to meet on Friday and chat through this, and then got in contact with Mr. Gresham, and just excited to see, yeah. Kind of finding ways to reuse structures in the area to increase some density, but, but kind of preserve some of the history of the area. So I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Okay. Passes unanimously. Item 11D is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 10800 Southwest 44th, going from AA to PUD 1880. Councilman Carter, do you wish to present for Councilwoman Young? And no one has signed up to speak.
Being with no protests, we move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E is, is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 8113 South Sunny Lane, going from PUD 1810 to PUD 1884. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, if I could ask you another question? Thanks. I know this, this spud is for, for multifamily as well as commercial. I was just curious, looking at the, this kind of pre-layout, I was interested in knowing, like, percentage-wise, what part is gonna be commercial versus residential?
Sure. Mark Zidau with Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. This was a PUD that we had done a couple of years ago. There's single-family development planned to the west around the ball fields that are there. There's been more of a demand for some retail and light industrial uses along Sunny Lane. So that's what this application seeks to permit. So within this, there is no multifamily permitted.
Okay, residential, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. No one else has any questions, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item F is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 6401 North Kelly, going from SPOD 1151 and HNO to SPOD 1362. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. I, I do want to provide clarification that in the packet that we received, there were some uses that had been added that during the process of going, this going back to the planning commission, that were amended. So I do have in front of me a revised master design statement that I want to make sure is put on the record. And I want to make sure we approve this with the amendment for the master design statement. And I see we have a representative for the applicant here.
Absolutely. Gunner Joyce with Reeger Law Group, 136 Thompson Drive. On behalf of the applicant, just wanted to echo, we agree completely, didn't get that final edit in time. And so what those are, two uses, 8319 and 8321, both of those are the, the last uses listed out in the allowable use section. They were specifically tailored to the easternmost lot, but we had agreed to take those out after talking to Councilmember Nice, and that didn't make it into the one that's in the packet. So we agree with that amendment to take those two out.
So what I will ask is that we first approve the amended master design statement?
Okay, so we need to, do we, we need to do a motion on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we've got that up for motion and a second. Cast your votes, this is to amend the master design statement. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, and now I will ask that we approve what has been presented.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second on item F, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, 11G, two related items. One is to amend the master design statement to the one revised April 7th. And then the second item is the ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1102 Northeast 6th, going from R2 to SPOD 1375. This was deferred from meetings in March and April. Councilwoman Nice, it appears Walter Jacques has signed up to speak.
Okay, I will ask that Mark Zidau, please come forward, if you will. We, we went through the conversation and I'm hope, I want to emphasize that I'm not against this development whatsoever, I'm not. However, when I have a resident that has concerns or questions, I want to make sure that I'm able to give them an answer. And I haven't been able to feel comfortable with the answer pertaining to this particular development, as far as the change of the SPOD. So I'm, I'm going to ask you as well, the questions that I asked in our meeting. Because this is only for the use of a food truck area for temporary, temporary use, why did we not go the route of a special permit?
Sure, Mark Zidau, 20 Sheridan Avenue with Johnson and Associates. So currently, the site is zoned R2, two-family residential. And a special use permit would not be permitted to be sought, because the food truck park, food truck area use is not allowed under that zoning district as a special permit. So we were not able to seek that route, which is why we went with the SPOD.
Okay, so I wanted that for the point of clarification, as to why we had to go this route. So again, now, my question to you is, what are these amendments? And also, I want to ensure that we have said that this is a temporary use. Even though, once we change this, this is a permanent SPOD.
That is correct. So I'll, I'll quickly walk through the amendments that have been made since the initial reading at City Council. We've eliminated the retail use unit, we've restricted it, the other use units to the food truck area. We've added hours of operation, we've put a max on it of two food trucks. We've said that no amplified music would be permitted, there would be no alcohol sales permitted, and that any and all food trucks would require electrical hookup. So one of the items in the, in the letter that was received in protest was related to noise and light. And we've sought very hard to include items in the SPOD application to mitigate that. That includes the hours of operation, but it also includes requiring that electrical hookup. Today, Culture Coffee operates a food truck, and by right, they've been allowed to do that and operate with a generator. That causes significantly more noise than if we're able to tie it to the electrical system. That'll cut down significantly on the noise of the food truck.
Thank you for that. One of the things that I would like to see, and I'm just gonna put this in the atmosphere, not sure if this will stick. But I would like to see, because I know, again, this is a defined temporary use, that in 36 months, I would like for us to come back and remove that use, once, once they are complete with, with what they are doing as far as their development is concerned. Because for those that may not know, this is temporary because they are hoping to build a brick and mortar. And this will help them in the time being, as they prepare for that brick and mortar. So fully support that, but I just want to ensure, if we're saying temporary, that we keep it temporary. So I will, and I may not even be, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next 36 months. But I, I will ask that in 36 months, and I'm gonna put it on my own calendar, that we bring this back and, and look at, at least removing that one use for this development. Because again, that is what we have, at least advise the person who had the, the issues with this area. And I just want to make sure we're all okay with that.
Sure, so I, I think in, in principle, we can look at something like that. It's, it's my understanding that we cannot put that in the SPOD, because sunset clauses are not permitted. So it may be something that maybe we can work with the landowner through a lease agreement, and maybe keep you involved through that process.
That's what I would like to happen, if you don't mind, I appreciate that, thank you very much. And I understand we had someone that signed up to speak, and I'm happy to hear from that gentleman.
Yes, Walter.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Walter Jacks, 4832 Kelch Drive. I'm a life member of the JFK Neighborhood Association, which is the area affected by this spud. And I can report that Johnson and Associates and Culture Coffee have both sent representatives to give wonderful presentations at multiple neighborhood association meetings. And in those meetings, the association members have been unanimously supportive of this spud. We think they're a great partner in the community, and we're fully supportive of it. There has been talk of one person who has had some questions or issues, probably the one Councilwoman Nice has mentioned. She has not attended the meeting, so I've not had a chance to understand her issues. But everyone in the meetings has been unanimously supportive, thank you.
All right, so thank you for that comment, and from the neighborhood. And I did, again, talk to the resident, so I understand, I understand what she, what she has said, what, what she understands, and what she is hoping for. So I know we'll be good neighbors to, to this, this young lady as she resides next to this development. So with that, I'll first ask that we accept the amended master design statement, so I'll move for that.
All right, the motion is for item G1, to amend the master design statement. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
I will ask that we approve as amended.
This is item G2, the ordinance on final hearing. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11H is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 10800 Northwestern Avenue, going from C3 to SPOD 1381. This was deferred from April 12th, and no one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Nice.
That is me, I didn't have it highlighted. So I will go ahead and ask that we, I understand there were some amended TEs for this. So with, with that being added, I will ask for the approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11I is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1627 North Klein, going from R1 and UCD to SPOD 1391. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Yeah, I was, oh, you're already on your way up. I was gonna ask if the applicant could come speak to the project.
Fallon Brooks, 733 Northwest 22nd, representing the applicant. It's just a garage apartment on an alley and, near the plaza, pretty typical. If anybody has any questions?
No, I appreciate that. I would mostly, kind of similar to the, the last case we had in Ward 6 earlier, just wanted to sort of highlight what, you know, these garage apartment accessory dwelling units can look like, and how they can help increase that incremental density in areas that, you know, we need, we need to be able to provide that access for folks. And, you know, make sure that we're letting folks do these sorts of projects. And I, my understanding is that our code development update is working to encourage this kind of development. So just appreciate you mentioning that, and I will move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 3301 Southeastern Avenue, going from R1 SPOD 760 and SPOD 1251 to SPOD 1392. Councilman Stone, Terry Church has signed up to speak.
I'm here representing the applicant on this one, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. This was, this is a pretty, pretty simple project. It's just a expansion of an industrial lot, basically. Pass the planning commission unanimously, unless someone has some questions, I'll go ahead and motion for its approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item K is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 10501 East Memorial Road, going from AA to SPOD 1393. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, I do understand that this was approved by the planning commission, and the applicant was present with no one there. No protesters, at least. So I will go ahead and ask for approval of this application.
All right, we have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11L is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close 118 feet of the east-west alley of Block 2 and Westover Edition, near Southwest 5th and Ollie. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, this is a pretty simple consolidating that property to just facilitate some commercial development, so I will motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11M is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close 703 feet of a 20-foot wide north-south access easement near Southwest 89th and County Line. Councilman Carter, do you wish to move this on Councilwoman Young's behalf?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11N is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close a five-foot wide utility easement, located between lots 4 and 5, a Block 40, in the Rivendell section addition, near Southwest 131st Terrace. Councilman Greenwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was approved unanimously by the planning commission, I recommend for approval.
Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item O, this is an ordinance on final hearing. This relates to massage and amending the Oakland City Municipal Code. This is the third of three meetings on this topic. There was a previous presentation and a public hearing, and now the council has the opportunity to move it forward if it so desires.
I do have a few things I'd like to just kind of talk through before we- I do have a few things I'd like to just kind of talk through before we take any movement on this. I, you know, when this was presented to us, there was actually no data really given to us about the issues, you know, claiming to underlie the need for this change. So, I've interacted with staff. I appreciate their work to get back some of that information to me, but I'm, I, I have issues with this change, and I, and I had to make myself a little 1-2-3 map here because it feels quite convoluted to me what, what this would actually end up doing, or what the intended, the stated intended purpose, and then some of the unintended consequences that might come from, from passing something like this. So, you know, I understand that this is, you know, would give us the ability, the city, to deny or revoke a license for a massage business for somebody who has pending charges of, and the way it's stated, is an offense involving use of force and violence that amounts to a felony, offense involving sexual misconduct, as defined in our municipal code, and then an offense involving narcotics, dangerous drugs, or weapons that amounts to a felony. So, this is for pending charges. Someone's not gotten their day in court, not had their ability to access due process. They don't have a conviction of any of these three things. So, I asked, you know, what, let's just take 21, for example, what are the cases where, where this, the chart, or the conviction for certain charges that would fall under this have been sought, and they've been pled down to other charges? And in 2016, there were 13 cases that were provided to, or sorry, 2016, 2021, 13 cases that were provided to me. Six of them did receive a conviction for massaging without a license. Five of them are either pending, or they've been dismissed, and then two were either for disturbing the peace or disorderly conduct. And then I was also told, so, so those six, rather, I want to point out that those six of the 13 that did receive a conviction, received a conviction of massaging without a license. So, they never came to the city to ask for a license. So, they wouldn't have even been caught in this process, even if they had had charges of something else, because they never came to the city for, or, or didn't have a license to revoke, also. So, then I asked how many massage licenses were applied for in 2021, and that turned out to be 91, four of which, it sounds like people had these charges, but no conviction in that we wish we could have denied them the license. But again, I was then told that, you know, well, I want to point out again, that this doesn't capture those folks that were convicted of massaging without a license, because they never applied for a license. So, they wouldn't have been, if we make this change, they wouldn't have been subject to denial of a license, because they never applied for a license to begin with. I also, I guess, one question I do have that I wasn't able, I just didn't have time to follow up on, you know, we were, some other information was sent to me, saying that Vice has conducted undercover operations at approximately 86 massage parlors, which resulted in arrests at 80 of them. Most of the time, the people who are arrested are not the ones trying to apply for the license. They typically move around from place to place or state to state. So, I guess one of my questions related to that, and again, I just, I don't see the intended, the stated intention of this change to actually address any of the issues that are truly at hand. And I'm curious, for those folks that were arrested, those 80 folks that were not the ones who were trying to apply for a license, what are they typically charged with? And what, do we have any information about kind of what happens to those folks going through the legal process?
I want to first clarify that the city licenses the business, not the masseuse, or the person giving the massage. So, the individuals who are charged criminally are persons who would not apply for the business license. They're simply charged for violating state law. I know it's amended to massaging without a license. That's because the state does require a license for the individual, whereas the city does not. So, this ordinance would address the applicant who owns the business, who is attempting to get a massage establishment license, where sexual misconduct has occurred previously by one of the employees.
So, by one of the, so one employee did something, and so now the business owner is, is no longer allowed to run their business because they have an employee?
Well, if sexual misconduct was found to occur at the premises, that could preclude the business from obtaining a massage license at that location. I can let police really go into the details of how that, how that kind of, these massage organizations work, that might shed a little more light on it. I'm only focusing on kind of the-
Well, I just, I think my, again, I think kind of, even what I'm hearing you say is that, that even these cases from 2021 that were presented to us aren't necessarily for the people who would be applying for a license at the city level. So, these cases and the 80 arrests that, arrests that took place, if I'm getting that number right, still, this doesn't address, that this proposed change doesn't address those cases at all. There's almost, now I'm hearing there's almost no connection between the cases that were presented to, to me, and, and somebody applying for a business license. So, I think I just, again, I kind of have, I struggle with it, there's, we're taking away somebody's ability to do their business because of a location where something happened, and that we don't even have a conviction for it, so that due process hasn't been allowed. And, you know, I, I, it just sounds to me like we have more of an issue with the legal system than with the way that our policy is written, to allow for someone to have a license. And I think, to just sort of, kind of, put it in a little more contest, context of a lot of what I, I feel like I've tried to say from, from this dais, is that this sort of, to me, points to the wastefulness of when we use public resources to try to address perceived harm, whether it be coercion, coercion to engage in prostitution, or other, other acts like that. And, but the inability of our criminal legal system to actually produce accountability for those folks that are doing the coercing, that are, that are maybe holding something over someone's head, if we even know that, that coercion is happening or not, whether it could be potentially consensual. And so, I just, you know, I, again, I think there's, the time and resources that have been put into potentially trying to make this change, the time and resources put into trying to get convictions for people engaging in this behavior isn't stopping it, and it's not producing accountability or safety for anyone in the, anyone in the situation. So, I would really, you know, I don't, as far as I know, we as a city do not invest in any services for people who have experienced human trafficking, coercion to engage in prostitution. And so, I just think that this is sort of a misplaced effort to potentially take people's rights away, and that, I think that's the unintended consequence of writing policy that, in my opinion, sounds like it's, it's flouting the Constitution. So, I just, I, I will be voting no if someone makes a motion to approve this, because I just, I worry that we're kind of going down the wrong path, and actually trying to address the core issues and the root issues, which, and instead, we're just trying to create ways to, to deny people licenses based on the behavior of someone else, potentially, is what it sounds like, and not even what that person individually has done, and been convicted in a court of law for. So, I, I guess that's all my, what I'd like to say, and I appreciate you responding, answering my questions. Thanks.
Chief Gorley, can someone here explain why the police force wants these changes?
Morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Sorry, my name's Lieutenant Weir, and I'm the supervisor for the vice enforcement unit. I've been the supervisor for the vice enforcement unit since February of '21, but I was also a detective there years back, and that's why I got brought back to supervise that unit. I'm going to speak pretty clearly to you guys, that I, I brought this to the chief and our licensing department, because this city, Oklahoma City, has a problem. And a vote against this ordinance, as we've proposed, is a vote for human trafficking, for money laundering, and for organized crime in Oklahoma City. Because the last five years, the vice unit has received complaints from citizens where they, where they walked in to get a massage, because they played golf with their buddy or whatever, and then had somebody try and offer sexual services to them. And they just wanted a massage. So, then we received complaints at these places, that are brick and mortar places, that are licensed through the city of Oklahoma City by the police department, by our licensing department, and our leadership, to run a legitimate business, and they're not running a legitimate business. They're, they're organized criminals running prostitution brothels, basically sponsored by the city of Oklahoma City. We realized it was enough of a problem. We went to licensing, we went to our attorneys, and we said, we got to do something about this. Whenever the vice unit can send a detective in to 86 places in five years, and 80 times be offered prostitution crimes, be offered sexual services, we have a problem. And we prosecute to the full extent, we prosecute at the highest court we can in Oklahoma County, and what we find is that these organized criminals will hire the right attorneys, plead to the right crimes, and circumnavigate our current ordinances that keep us from closing the doors of these businesses. These are the businesses that we want to close, the businesses that are committing crimes, not the businesses that are legitimately operating, the legitimate massage parlors that are offended whenever these type of people walk in. What we find, what we find, even whenever we put a lot of heat, and we make several arrests at some of these places, they just turn over. They turn over the person that applies for the license, because they want the police department to back off. They don't change the prostitutes that are working inside them, they don't even change the towels. So, we went at this ordinance a little bit different direction, got our legal counsel involved in it, and we said, this is a way that we can really make a difference for the positive for Oklahoma City.
But I still, I'm hearing there's only four people in 2021, who, out of 91, who applied for a license that would have fallen under this category. So, what happens to all those other 80 places that you made arrests at?
So, what happens is, is we have due process for those licenses that will be denied. So, whenever they apply for a license, I show that there's a, a history of prostitution that's occurred at this place, and we feel like it's going to continue to occur, and we've made arrests at that place. We will have a hearing with our city leadership, three different directors from three different departments, and they will be allowed to present evidence of who they are, why they're going to run a legitimate business. The police department and the licensing department will put on a case to say, this is why we don't think they will. And then our city leadership gets to decide, yes, they can have that license at that place, or no, they can't. It's not the end-all be-all, just because the police department says, we don't want you to have a license at this business. There's still a legal process that we have to go through-
So, that's the process, that's the process that it would follow?
Yes, sir.
The due process, it would still have? I think the question-
I'm not hearing that's a due process in a court, that is in administrative-
It's an administrative process.
Okay.
But, but the question, I think, was really to how many, because there was, the information that she had was there were only four that would have been denied as a result of this change. Is there more than that?
There, yes, there are a lot more than that. I don't-
So, why was I not provided that? So, four out of the 91 who applied for a license would have fallen under this, but you're saying there's more, but you didn't give me that information?
There's many more. I, I don't know where you got the, those facts and figures from, but-
From staff?
Probably from the licensing department. And with the current ordinance, if there's a violation that had occurred at that place, we will recommend that they are not denied, they are not approved a license, and we will go through the process, the administration.
So, then how do we address all the other 80-plus places that, it sounds like, arrests took place, but either they, that four and 80 is a different number. Those are different numbers. So, I'm not hearing where, how are we addressing that large gap in people who might be, again, maybe are being coerced into this behavior? Like, what, what happens to the person who's arrested, who is engaging in solicitation? Are we providing any support to them to get out of that situation?
Yes. So, the police department partners with several organizations, and that's first and foremost what we do, we're a-
They're not charged with prostitution?
They are charged. But first, they're interviewed, and they're offered the services that they qualify for.
And then they're charged and potentially going to prison.
And anybody who identifies as a victim of human trafficking is immediately brought into the services that they qualify for, and they are not charged with prostitution.
Rick, did you want to answer the information?
Yeah, Rick Wickin Camp, Director of Development Services. I wanted to answer the question about the four out of the 91. Those were four that the police sent over, that they recommended be denied, and because they didn't have a current conviction, we, we issued the license. But we, we didn't have a chance to pull all our files, and therefore, we would have had to speculate about how many others might have been, you know, might have fallen under this new ordinance and had been denied. But we just had four recommendations from the police department during that calendar year, and that's why we reported the four. There could have been more, but we just didn't have any knowledge of those.
So, it sounds like that was just a miscommunication, because what I was asking is, how many would have been denied or recommended for denial under, if this changed? And it just sounds like what I got was, what actually happened last year, not going forward. If we had 91 applicants, how many of those would maybe be recommended for denial? So, that was just a miscommunication, I think, on what I was actually asking, but that's all I have.
I think the other thing that's important to note is that when we go through this administrative procedure, if the applicant is denied the application, they still have the right to go to district court. And so, they have further due process rights built into the system.
Sorry. My head's spinning right now. Am I the only one? I, I, I'm still having some, some issues here. And I might need to hear from the, you said previously detective, but now you're with the vice squad. The, would you go back and explain? So, the person who, remember earlier in the council, y'all, when I mentioned the 13- and 15-year-olds, and that that's what really haunts me? Why it haunts me? I said that we're putting those kids in so many dangerous pathways. And one of the pathways I've learned is human trafficking, right? Sorry, it's really hard for me to talk about, because it's, it's, I taught middle school, so these are my babies, right? I really worry about them. I just had, I just had a college student tell me that they're homeless. A college student tell me that, and that they had nowhere to go. So, I take this very seriously. I want to state that, since we're stating the serious level of things. So, when I hear the councilwoman mention people being coerced, my worry is that my students, without a support system, are the ones who find themselves, often, when they are in this cycle, coerced into sex work. So, I need that clarification. I got a little confused there. So, let's say one of our kids finds themselves coerced into doing this sort of sex work. Did you say that they would be, you all would connect them to the resources they would need, and they would not face prostitution charges? Because that's, because you see what I'm saying? Like, I get that they've done something that is illegal-
Absolutely.
But I also understand the path, how they got there, particularly if their parents kicked them out of their house, because they have a different interpretation of their sacred book. So, y'all, I'm telling you, this is the, this is the thing that hurts my brain, hurts it daily. It's why I ran for the seat, was to provide support for them. So, I need to understand who would and who would not face criminal charges? Because once they have that criminal charge, a felony at that, their ability to have housing, employment, so then suddenly, they're part of the homelessness cycle that is frustrating this city right now, and they're just caught up. So, I, that's why I worry about charging kids. You see what I'm saying?
So, first and foremost, kids are who we try and find to pull out of that. That's why I have six detectives that works for me, and that's why the chief gives me- That's why I have six detectives that works for me, and that's why the chief gives me the leeway that he does to work as much as we do, is because we care about the kids that are victims in these situations, and the kids are never, ever charged with prostitution crimes whenever we recover them out of human trafficking situations. They're immediately entered into, in the state of Oklahoma, by state statute DHS custody, and we fold in all the NGO services that we can provide to these children to make sure they get the counseling, the help that they need. There's actually a couple of homes that are certified through the state AG's office that are specifically for juvenile human trafficking victims, and that's where they go.
I appreciate that clarification. Now, a follow-up. What about the 18, 19, 20, 21-year-old?
So those, we look at a little bit differently, because a lot of those people are now adults, but we still give them an opportunity, and we will still present charges for human trafficking on the people that forced them into this, or pandering lots of times. So whenever they're turned out and they end up finding themselves in this lifestyle, that's also what we do, is we investigate as many cases as we can and find the people that are new in this industry, and we go after their traffickers criminally.
Is, what is the likelihood? I appreciate that clarification. What is the likelihood that 18, 19, 20, 21-year-old faces the charge, right? The prostitution, the charge?
Every situation is different. I mean, because lots of times, they're experienced in the criminal justice system, they have lots of priors, and then they find themselves working in that dynamic.
Boy, do you hear, do you understand, do you all understand why this is? I appreciate your passion. It was really hard for me to hear you say that if someone voted no for this, that they are voting for human trafficking. Because let me tell you, my inclination to say no on this has, that was, I understand your passion, but I just need you to understand that I have concerns about this, that are the people's lives who I think have been coerced into human trafficking. So I, that, that stung. I just think things are a little bit more complicated than the way you presented them. And I'm also worried about the pending charge part of this. That's like a, it's hard for me to, like, if that weren't in here, if that language weren't in here, I would have an easier time being a yes on this. It's that pending charge part also, because that person hasn't gone through the criminal justice system yet, had their due process.
I'll clarify a little bit. So the 12 cases that we've made at 12 different brick-and-mortar places in Oklahoma City, where we've arrested people for offering to engage in prostitution, we've been in 12 different locations this year since I came back in February of 2021. Out of those brick-and-mortar places, we've had 34 arrests over the last five years for prostitution at those places. I've received 32 complaints from the citizens of Oklahoma City at those 12 locations because they're offering prostitution instead of massages. So the places that we go after have a history, a long history, several complaints and many arrests, and that's why we wanted to go through the licensing department and the police department, has wanted to take a different approach at these businesses that are not paying state taxes, they're not paying city sales tax, they're laundering their money, and they're offering prostitution services in a brick-and-mortar business whenever they're supposed to be offering massage services.
But do you hear me on that pending charges part? I guess that's still where I'm having difficulty. Other council members, what are you all, I cannot be, I cannot be the only one up here having this struggle. I mean, maybe I am? Okay.
How to address the pending charge issue? If you, if you look back at the point of the ordinance, it's to address the applicant. So the fact that an individual who is charged with, say, prostitution, has a pending criminal charge, that's part of the criminal case for just that individual. What we're trying to do is target the business and prevent them from obtaining an application to run a business where that activity occurs. So it's an administrative license process that we're trying to address here. We're not trying to, in fact, we're intentionally trying to not tie it to a criminal case. The police would still have to prove and bring evidence to the director of licenses to show sexual misconduct is occurring at that business. That criminal case could be dismissed, it could be pleaded out, it could be charged with something entirely different. But if the, if the police can show the director of licenses that sexual misconduct is occurring at that business, then that gives them a basis to deny the license.
And then, James, there's also an appeal from whatever the director of license determines to a license review board. And from that review board, the owner of the business could take it to district court, too.
Yes, any denial or revocation of a license, immediately, there's an appeal process. And it's to the city first, and if the person aggrieved by the city's decision disagrees, they have an appeal right to the district court. So there's, this doesn't affect that applicant's due process in any way, shape, or form.
No, I think, for me, it still continues to come down to that, you know, I think back to the median safety ordinance that we spent over $1 million fighting, and then we invested a couple hundred thousand in a van into a program to address the needs, the root causes of why someone might be on a median, asking for money, soliciting money, and are getting great results out of it. And I, I think our continued, as a country, as a city, we continue to try to put, try to fight Band-Aids through the criminal legal system rather than trying to address the root causes. And specifically, the Polaris Project says, human trafficking can happen to anyone, but some people are more vulnerable than others. Significant risk factors include recent migration or relocation, substance abuse, mental health concerns, involvement with the child welfare system, and being a runaway or homeless youth. So my focus will always be on addressing those root causes, so that somebody who has recently migrated to the United States, who might not find any other source of income and economic stability that can then get taken advantage of by somebody, because putting a child into DHS custody, it's a broken system. It's not solving the problem for them. It's not solving the reasons why they got somewhere. And same with, with someone who might have migrated here from another country, from another state, thinking they were looking for a certain opportunity and finding out that it was not what they thought it was. So I just think this is, again, sort of a case of us trying to tinker and put some Band-Aids around things, and put people through a criminal legal system that does not, and is not providing true accountability for the people that are perpetuating harm on other people, or safety for the people being taken advantage of.
Remember, this is not targeting those individuals. This is simply to prevent businesses from allowing this activity to occur in their establishment.
I'm just curious, as, as just hearing the conversation, are we just, are we only responding to these complaints, or are we actually initiating the process of going into these parlors undercover to see what's happening to make sure they are compliant?
Ma'am, there's, as of last council meeting, there was listed online, there was 104 erotic massage parlors in Oklahoma City where there was reviews. My unit focuses on the 14- and 15-year-old victims and that are for sale online, that are actually, and no kidding, human trafficking situations. We only respond to these businesses whenever we receive complaints from the citizens of Oklahoma City.
That was my question. Thank you.
And those kind of things.
I guess I would like to say thank you all very much for what you do, and thank you for this ordinance. I mean, it's, the whole thing is, it's not about the individual, it's trying to shut down the business where it continually, continually, continually takes place. There are people being trafficked, and this allows that business to shut down, and hopefully allows us to get them the resources they need, especially when you talk about caring about kids. You know, that's a horrible situation for them to be in. And to say, yeah, we know what's going on, we're not going to do anything about it because it's a partial Band-Aid, I just can't, I can't go along with that. So, thank you all again, I appreciate your answer.
I do also want to point out, when we say things like continually, that's not based in any data. We have not been presented data about the same person applying for a license and getting that license, and then engaging in the same behavior. So I just, I want to also point that out, that a lot of these conversations, I know, are loaded with emotion, and I think Councilperson Cooper pointed out that I don't think any of us take these issues lightly, but I do want to make sure that we're not speaking in broad conceptions that are based not in actual data, in fact, but in the emotion that we feel for an imagined person, and the circumstances we imagine them to be in, rather than their felt lived experience. So I just, I'll just mention that.
So to clarify, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, but what happens at a lot of these places is, they get busted, someone else puts their name on the request for the permit, even though all the same people are there, right? Still being trafficked there, we approve it because they didn't get busted.
But I thought we had a bus, so we arrested all those people, and they weren't being trafficked anymore. You said that we arrest folks that are engaging in the solicitation, we remove them from the situation. So how are they the same people engaging in that?
They're bonded out of jail, and they go right back to committing the same crimes they were.
So they're bonded out of jail because they were charged with solicitation, and we didn't provide them the resources so that they are going, we're not providing them the resources and the supports to stay out of that situation, so they're going back to those situations?
You can only provide resources to the people that will take them.
I just want to say, I agree with Todd's comments, and I want to thank Chief Gorley for bringing this to us. I think the one thing that I wanted to make sure that I was comfortable with was, every person applying for a license is afforded some form of due process. And with Kenny's comments that there is an appeal, then there's another appeal within the city where we have the burden of proof, and also that the right to go to the district court. I'm very comfortable with this ordinance.
I also just want to say, and I hear what you're saying, Councilman Stone, what I am asking for, and have been asking for since I took office, and I want to make sure Ward Two hears me especially, what I have been asking for, and what I'm a bit confused by, why it has not happened, is that if staff can bring this ordinance to this council to deal with this issue, when will staff bring to this council a request for funding to better provide resources for our students to keep that, to break that cycle we just heard described? And to say that the kids or the people refuse the service, we've heard, remember during Maps Four, remember when they did the presentation on homelessness, and we've heard it with The Better Way also? Sometimes a person will refuse the service five, 10, I think the number they said in that meeting was like 50-something times before they'll, because the trust is broken. Because the other thing that's uncomfortable to say here is that sometimes it's not just that a parent kicks their child out of their house, and I'm not even just talking about LGBT, sometimes the guardian took advantage of that kid sexually. And now a trust is broke. A trust is broke. If you can't trust the people who are supposed to take care of you to do that, then why would you trust a social worker, or a teacher, or a councilperson when they're going to provide, when they say, I'm here to help? Because your guardian has let you down, and if the two people who were supposed to take care of you in the first place have done so, it takes a long time to repair that trust, a long time to repair that trust. So I'm asking, and have been asking, for us to invest in trust repair and providing better services for, for our people. So I will not, I will not hear someone who says that a no vote, I mean, I'm happy to, I want to build a relationship with you, because it sounds like you're doing some work that's worth our time, but it was, I just can't stress enough, that, I would ask for, for the people of Ward Two to hear that the approach that I'm trying to take to break the cycle, I think will have longer benefits than what this ordinance is attempting to do. And I'm not questioning the, what would you call it? The intent of the people trying to do this. I just don't think this is the right way to get to the root cause of protecting our children and breaking this cycle where they find themselves going right back out to what they've known, what they've known. And it's up to us as adults to start breaking that cycle. It's, I just don't know, all the research tells us this, and I just keep saying the research up here, so. And after I vote no, I'm going to need to take a break. This is not cool. I just, I need to calm down.
And I appreciate all the discussion today, and the concerns, as well as the support for this. I think clearly the intent is to try to deal with the issues that we have in front of us as a community. We as staff don't, Lieutenant Ware is very passionate about this, because he has to see it every single day, but, but it's, we aren't, we aren't in a position to judge why someone is voting in a particular way, or, or what their motivation might be. I'm confident everyone up here on this horseshoe wants to see human trafficking stopped, wants to see people get services and get help. This is an effort to try to deal with what we're facing with the businesses, and we want to see that all happen. But we are not judging how someone's voting and why they're voting in a certain way, and what their intent is.
Well, to the contrary, that's not what the officer said with vice.
I'm clarifying.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that that is not.
That's why I said that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And city manager, I would, it actually means a whole lot to me that you just said what you did, so thank you.
Okay, does the council wish to, what does the council wish to do with item 11O?
I'm prepared to make a motion for the ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes five to three. All right, 11P is an ordinance on final hearing relating to the police department amending Chapter 43 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code. This relates to authorizing nonsworn members of the police department to prepare and submit a collision report. This also is the third of three meetings on this proposed ordinance change. There was a previous presentation and a public hearing. No one has signed up to speak today. What does the council wish to do with item P? We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11Q, this is an ordinance on final hearing relating to sewers and sewage disposals, solid waste utilities, and a general schedule of fees. This has been also previously presented, and a public hearing has been held, and today is potential final passage of this ordinance. No one has signed up to speak.
Just, I just have a question.
Yes.
And as we continue to, we will continue to have resources and/or ways that our residents will be able to still, still be able to use the services, because clearly, as we've been looking at other things that have taken place prior to, we've had certain incidents that have actually come before council members in their respective neighborhoods and communities pertaining to these same issues due to the landlord. However, now, with us raising these, these prices and services, and all across the board for other services being on the rise, depending on what you have across this city and in the state, I just want to ensure and keep at the forefront of the conversation that there is some type of resource or relief available if we have residents that's so needed. Because I understand, and we had the first presentation, how incremental these changes will be, but as we look at the things that are happening as far as development and other pieces of all of this, that is, is a concern for me. So I just want to ensure that we are able to address that even with this process. And I'm not sure if anyone can answer that, or how we answer that, but I would like to make sure that happens.
So Chris will give us a quick update on what we do with people who need assistance with their bills.
Good morning. Chris Brown, and Utilities Director. Councilmember, we, we.
Councilmember, we, we actually have, have requested an additional person in this year's budget to be more deliberate in that respect. We have been somewhat passive where people need to call in if they need help, and we have, we have resources that we refer them to, but we're going to put a person in place that would be much more deliberate in aligning the available funding with those people in need.
And to that question, how will we know, will this be, you know, put on the website, or how will we know that this person will be communicating with the residents, or how will this process work?
Yes, ma'am. So if somebody is unable to pay their bill, there's a long process that we have before we would actually disconnect their service. And one of the pieces is we reach out to them early, and we find out whether or not they need those resources, and then we, we align them with the resources. Now with the new, new federal funding, we have more resources available. So, so we are better able to align, so we're bringing in somebody who can take that role full-time, so that we make sure that we get the folks the help that they need as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that part of it is addressed, because, you know, those are conversations that we have when we're out in public, when people hear or see what has been said on the news pertaining to increases in, in their services, so we want to be, I personally want to be able to give a clarification if needed about what can happen in resort as a result of, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, what does the council wish to do with the ordinance?
As Vice Chair of the Water Trust, I'd like to move for the approval of this ordinance.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Yeah, okay. Item 11R, ordinance on final hearing, this is removing metered parking on the north side of West Oklahoma City Boulevard from approximately 92 feet west to approximately 136 feet west of the West curb line of Thunder Drive. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, my understanding is this is just to provide some spaces for streetcar operations, transit staff to be able to better serve as that streetcar stop as maintenance-related issues come up, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item S, ordinance on final hearing establishing a full-time reserved parking city permit required zone on the north side of West Oklahoma City Boulevard from approximately 92 feet west to approximately 136 feet west of the West curb line of Thunder Drive. Councilwoman Hammond.
I will move for approval as well.
Motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11T1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, and someone has signed up to speak on one of these items. Robert Phillips is here for item E, 2701, Northeast 21st Street.
And, and as he comes, Mr. Chad, were you able to connect with him in, on yesterday and his family? I know they were working to present a plan of action and, and the things that needed to be done with the property.
Sure, Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement Superintendent. I was able to communicate, I believe it's with your, yes, with Javon, your daughter, and she said you all had consulted a contractor to secure the building.
Yes.
It's my understanding that you were receiving bids currently.
We were, but I'm selling this one in particular because he's going to use steel, we've gone through boards and stones and everything else, but he's going to be using steel to do all the, except one. It would be used that way also, but have, have something to get in and out of.
And that's for the securing of the structure?
Right.
Okay. What about the dilapidated portion of the complaint?
I addressed that, and I've already signed the contract, it's for like the roof and things like that, or something. And so, but I'm not sure when all of that will be completed, but at least they're going to be starting only this week.
For the, putting the roof on it or securing?
Security first.
Okay.
And because then, we can go to the dilapidation, but the reason security is first is because then, I want to be able to get in and out, but it's getting the rainy season, so we have to make sure that we are doing it safely. I was through there Saturday night at about 11 something, and there was someone there. So we, we're going to do security first. And I would love to get the lighting that I was from some time ago, but I haven't received that.
Have you started the permit process for the roof?
Yes, as far as what I would have to pay and things of that nature.
So with that being said, and I have been, the family actually has contacted, contacted me to also confirm the things that he has said, so I want to make sure we get that in front of you as, as far as, I believe he told me he had the actual contract itself, so I, I want to make sure that we, we have received that contract, so. And that was my ask for us to look at what is the plan of action. We have to have a plan of action in order for this to move forward and, and for us to, to understand that this is something that you are working to secure and to work on bringing into compliance to remove from the dilapidated list. So with that, I, I am going to ask, and that we look at just two weeks, and with, with Dr. Phillips, and I'm going to, Mr. Dr. Phillips, please have, if, if not your daughter, have your nephew to stay in contact with Mr. Chad every day, okay? Can you help me do that?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I'm going to ask for E, that we do that for, for two weeks, and with that two weeks, the plan is to bring this plan of action in front of us, to make sure it is comparable to what our city standards are, and to also make sure that the work that you have committed to be done is going to also start the process of. And if there are some resources for those who, who are watching that can help us to make sure this building is secure, we would love to have that. And as you said, and heard from Dr. Phillips, just Saturday, he went there, I think he said around midnight, and there was someone already, there was someone there. So there are some issues, and we, and I would like to figure out how to, how to get some, something over there, I don't know what, that's what I'm trying to think through out loud, but I don't know what we need in order for him to have the protection he needs to get the work done, instead of always being pushed back as far as that work is concerned, because it's, it's not helping us as a city, and it's not helping him as a, as a property owner to come into compliance for this property. So I, I am going to ask for E, we do that for a couple more weeks, and we are going to, Dr. Phillips is going to stay in contact, or his family or designee will stay in contact with, with our, our city code enforcement every single day until we meet again in the next two weeks, and that's my ask, if you don't mind.
Are we doing it every day?
Yes, sir, I appreciate you doing that.
Okay, so that's a motion from Councilwoman Nice to defer item 11T1E to the May 10th meeting. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're still on the public hearing, nobody else has signed up to speak, and so we can look at T2, which is the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated, save for those struck or deferred. Got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11U1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Councilwoman Nice, I presume you would like to make a motion on item T to defer to May 10th?
Yes, please, thank you.
We have a motion in a second to defer item 11U1T, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. No one else has signed up to speak on these items, so we'll close the public hearing in advance to the resolution at 11U2, declaring that the structures are unsecured, save for those previously struck or deferred. Got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11V1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
So we will move then to the resolution found at 11V2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned, save for those previously struck. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11W123. W1 is a public hearing regarding a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving the allocation of Geo Limited Tax Bond Proceeds in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000. W2 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Development Trust approving the allocation, this was deferred from April 12th. Item W3 is a revised joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. It is presented as an either-or option, two or three. Don't know where we want to go from here.
If you don't mind, I will, do, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. John Pettis, and also Joy Reardon.
Okay.
Please start, may I ask one question? If that's okay. Just, Kenny, so I follow this, is, is W1 the allocation itself? W2 is the original joint resolution, and then W3 is the revised joint resolution that we talked about last time, we'd make some revisions to it?
Yes, correct.
Well, kind of. W1 is just a public hearing. W1 is just the opportunity for people to speak.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I just, as far as the public hear, hearing is concerned, I do want to hear from our residents, but I am asking that we accept the revised joint revolution, resolution, and with that, there are some, some things that we can ask for as far as, in, in ask in the EDA, so I, I would like for us to look at that, and, and before I make the rest of my comments, I do want to hear from those who have signed up to speak.
Okay, then we'll handle W1, the public hearing, and we have two people who have signed up to speak. John Pettis?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. John Pettis, 1208 Northeast 55th, Oklahoma City. Mr. Mayor and the council, at the last meeting, Councilmember Stone Cypher made the comment about the cost of construction continuing to go up, that will be affecting this project, this complex. I'd like to mention other things that need to be considered regarding this complex. Number one, there are several different methods of financing included in this project. Number one, this project has low income housing tax credits. It's time sensitive on the word of those kind, of those tax credits. Also, an inducement resolution is set forth for bond financing to assist in this project. The other thing that needs to be considered, the environmental assessment, Phase One and Phase Two, which the city I'm sure has done, is time sensitive. The clock is ticking on these things that have to be done. I would ask that the council do not delay this complex, funding for this complex anymore, and move to approve the funding for this, for this project, because it's going to continue to go up, especially on the financing side of the component that's going to make this project successful. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Joy Reardon?
Can anybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Joy Reardon, 125 Northwest 9th. Thinking on this project, and this is, what, our third meeting we've had on this issue? Why has it taken up until now to come in front, like someone last meeting brought up the issue? Why is it now, over two years later, I understand COVID and stuff, but there's, there's been multiple city council meetings that they have, they could have come up and asked for this money? Why is it now they're in such a dire strait that they've got to come in front of the city council and beg y'all for $1.25 million to start a project that they, they got rezoned over two years ago? Why is that? Why have they been sitting on this project for over two years and now coming to the city council and begging for money? And the other projects that they, they claimed were supposed to start back in November of 2019, they were going to start a short time after they got it rezoned. They still have not made any communications since the last city council meeting to anybody in housing, at all! And frankly, the, most of the residents at, where I live are getting sick of it. We keep asking and asking, and we get nothing from Forest Street, absolutely nothing, no communications at all. That's my understanding. Like I said two meetings ago, I did not want to air out the dirty laundry of what's, what's been going in the housing. And Councilwoman Nice, I do believe at two meetings ago, you did ask for audit. Has that even been started?
There, there are some stipulations as far as their audit is concerned, and the fact that they audit a, a year prior, so if I'm not mistaken, they just finished the 2020 audit? Is that correct? They just finished their 2020 audit, and then we're in 2022.
Okay. But yeah, we would like, me and, and a bunch of other residents, not just at our site, but at, all over the system, would like to know somewhat of what's going on. Their, in their five-year plan, 10-year plan, stuff like that, we keep seeing discrepancies in it. That this is going to HUD, which is, we're under federal.
Well.
But it's actually getting worse, worse because of current situations, and I won't bring that out.
I understand. If you'd like to join me, I'll be at their meeting tomorrow, and you can bring all your friends and residents that live there with you.
They're scared.
And, and I get that, and that's, that's.
No, they, they are literally scared to lose, lose their home.
Trust, trust me when I say, I have residents in this same development that are in the same position, and the fact that I just spoke to a resident or prior resident, and she advised me that someone that works for the Housing Authority called her and said, well, if they're calling you, tell them to call me, because that's why the city won't give them any money. So, you know, those are concerns for me when we hear about that kind of stuff, and the fact that we're not, like you said, we're not actually communicating with the residents, but we're asking for others to, to, to take the time to send the phone numbers to others and send them their way, instead of being proactive in those conversations. So those are concerns, so I, I definitely understand, and your, your concerns are warranted, understood, and, and I hope that you will also put those, those concerns on public record for, for comment when they have their meetings, because these are things that they have their meetings because these are things that we have to be aware of as far as these -- when we make these types of decisions. And we have to protect those residents who can't speak up for themselves or refuse to speak up for themselves because of these types of retaliation, if you will, or things that could happen as far as their housing is concerned. So I really appreciate you for always speaking up about that because I know it's not easy for you to do that. So thank you. Thank you very much.
And if you could contact me, and I will get with you. Tomorrow I have a doctor's appointment, but if you could please give me a call, there's some other issues that need to be addressed.
I will definitely do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will be back.
And I understand those are the only people that signed up to speak? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. As I said, I would like for us to just consider the revised version, but before we do that, since this is a public hearing, I want to make sure my comments are on record. I want to -- one of the things that I asked and had a conversation with some of our municipal council was, can you help me? Let's figure out and understand what is going on and where we can find a healthy compromise as far as what's happening. So one of the things that came out of that was this study from Kansas City. This is a transformation plan. As you see, it's over 200 pages of a transformation plan that they took the initiative to do with the residents and the neighborhood that surrounds it and the stakeholders that also are a part of the development where this is going to be. And now I want you to look at this. And some of these are duplicate pages, but this is the conversation that we got from our residents in Creston Park. So their first meeting, which I'm reading their timeline, relocation timeline, that they have provided, and I appreciate them for also translating word-for-word that community meeting. That helped me even better. I appreciate that. But as we look at development timeline, spring 2018, planning and design kickoff, the city have let the support letter in October of that same year and the approval of Section 8 from them that same year. There were, let's see, 2018, there was one meeting in that only five people attended. There was a meeting number two, only eight people attended. So in essence, only 13 people that live in this whole complex attended this meeting. So one of the things that also came out of this resident notice and the information that they sent to all of us to look at and to read as far as their correspondence with the residents, one of the things I want to pinpoint is their presentation. It says specifically on slide one of us, it's on page seven of their slide presentation for resident considerations, "OCHA will come back several times to present more details to the plan and request feedback." Well, March 2020, there was one meeting that happened that only had 19 residents. Meeting two only had 13, and several to me means more than two. As we look at the next year, there was -- that's when the notice came out in April and May, late April, early May, for the 90-day notice for them to vacate and understand that they will need to find a place to relocate. So they have misrepresented to the residents this whole time about the -- just the communication process. That's all I'm asking for, is to talk to the people and say what's going on. Be transparent. Say it. Just say it. And that's what we have not received as we look at this because I can't say, in my opinion, when I look at four meetings, that constitutes for several, and even after those first two, initial two, that they said several more meetings will happen afterwards. And to the point that we just heard of Ms. Reardon, there has been no correspondence, no communication until it's time for you to leave. And now I'm understanding too that there are a couple of residents who still have yet to be relocated, and now they're not even going to pay for those relocation fees because they are no longer eligible for relocation assistance. And there's a couple of others that we look at in that same conversation as well. So again, these are the real issues that I have. I don't have a problem with the development if it's going to really include the community, but they didn't even include the community. They're going to tell the community what they need instead of the community saying, "This is what we want." And that's a difficulty for me, comparing this little correspondence to an actual plan, an actual plan that included the people that live within this residence and how they were going to be transparent about each piece of this process and the executive summary and the things that they had on the planning team, just ensuring that they had a part of the conversation to understand what's happening. So again, those are the things, when we look at health, neighborhoods, housing, those are all of the things that they talked about in these 200 pages. And it's quite riveting to read that they were very thorough, so therefore they could gain the trust of the people and help them to understand, "This is what we want to do. This is how we want you to be a part of this process." However, this is, "Here's what's happening in 2018. Now 2021, you got to move." I don't -- I just have a problem with that as we're looking at it. So with that, I know there are some things that we're asking as far as the families being displaced have to, again, continue to find those reasonable accommodations, and some of those things have to be done by the right of these ordinances and different things that remain as far as the demolition rules and so say you for those things. But, you know, again, communication is key. And when you lack communication for these types of conversations for residents, it's hard. Of course, you know, again, people saying they don't want to come back, yeah, they're saying they don't want to come back because look what happened in the process. The process was not meant for them to be a part of, and it's just saying, "You have to leave, and we'll see if you can come back." And that's the one thing, and again, I have an issue and a problem with. So I am going to ask with that, that's part of my public hearing, that we look at the revised joint resolution to ensure that we can still have some type of accountability in this process for at least our residents as much as we can get. And I hope that we can go through a process like this when we look at how we revise the towers, how we revise anything else that belongs under the purview of the Oklahoma City Housing Authority instead of just a couple pages that say, "Here's your notice. You got to go." I'd rather we do something that actually incorporates the residents than the other. So with that, I'm hoping that we will revise -- accept the revised revision. I'll make the motion to accept that item. Item?
To adopt item W-3, the revised joint resolution.
W-3, correct. Thank you.
May I also, and Kenny, I just haven't had a chance to check my emails since this weekend when I think we last spoke, but my understanding, one of the asks that we had at the last council meeting on this item was to revisit the appointments to the Housing Authority. And, yeah, and we found out that it was -- it's going to require a state, a change in state law. And I think you said the process would be that that would have to come to the Legislative Committee, and I know Counselor Stone and Stone Cypher and I serve on there. So do we go ahead and start that process? What does that look like? I think we have to bring a resolution to council even. I just wanted -- it's part of this, so that's why I wanted to mention it now.
You don't have to necessarily bring a resolution to council.
Great.
You can if you wish, but it's --
Well, generally, it's bottom up. So I mean, you know, when we have our next Legislative Committee meeting, you can bring it forward, ask me to place it on the agenda. I'm the chair. Obviously, we're talking about the '23 session at this point. So I mean, we'll do the next legislative agenda, you know, over in the fall.
Okay. Well, looking forward to working with you, Chair.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second to approve item 11 W-3. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we are at W -- I'm sorry, 11 X-1, the public hearing regarding the resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 budget. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we will close it and advance to 11 X-2, a resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 budget for the funds here listed. This was presented at our last meeting. There's no presentation today. The council can make a motion to adopt if they so desire. There's a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Y-1 is a second public hearing regarding amending the June 22nd, 2021 Resolution Approving Certain Fire Listed and Other Sales Tax Expenditures. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we will advance to the resolution at Y-2, amending the June 22nd, 2021 Resolution Approving Certain Fire Listed and Other Sales Tax Expenditures, et cetera. There's a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11 Z-1 is a resolution authorizing Sherri Katz and Thomas L. Tucker to represent and defend city employee Wade Gorley in the case of Bruner v. City of OKC. Staff has not requested executive session. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11 AA-1 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing the firm Collins, Zorn, and Wagner PC to represent city employees Kelly Cassidy, Brandon Lee, and Robert Ridner in the case of Bruner v. City of OKC. Staff has not requested executive session. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes five to three. 11 AB-1 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing the firm Collins, Zorn, and Wagner PC to represent city employee Brandon Lee in the case of Van Landingham v. City of OKC. Staff has not requested an executive session. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes five to three. 11 AC is a request to enter a new executive session on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications concerning the cases here listed. So we just go ahead and take a vote, and we can handle this at the end of our other business. This is a vote to go into executive session. There is no resolution that will follow that, however. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item, as I said, we'll handle that at the end of our other business. 11 AD is a claim recommended for denial. Staff has not requested executive session. It is merely item AD-1A. We could adopt. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11 AE-1 is a claim recommended for approval. Staff has not requested executive session. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're at item 12, comments from council. Ward one.
None today, sir.
Ward two?
Yes, thank you. I have a letter I need to read this morning, so I appreciate your patience. We lost someone from Ward two, Scotty Orani. And I just, I typed up a letter where I have some comments, but then I thought a fellow Ward two resident might be better suited to speak to why Scotty matters so much. So, um, so Scotty called Ward two home, and before I served on city council, I met him, and I have known him to be a kind, thoughtful, and talented human. For many of us across our city, Scotty served as our introduction to understanding food culture, and it's a gift I'll always cherish. "What a good man," President Barack Obama said in his eulogy for the late Reverend Clement Pickney. Sometimes I think that's the best thing to hope for when you're eulogized after all the words and recitations and resumes are read, to just say someone was a good man. And that's the end of that quote. These words weigh on my heart when I think of Scotty's compassion, his understanding of community, his works, and his friendships. Speaking of friendships, I feel compelled to share words from Scotty's dear friend and fellow Ward two resident, Monty Milburn. The following words appeared on Monty's social media post. I'll read them right now as we honor this good man and his good deeds. And this is from Monty. "And so it was that just after 12:30 PM in the afternoon on Thursday, April 7th, Scotty, with one last breath and surrounded by friends and family, headed to that hobbit hut among those green hills and olive trees. It was a peaceful send-off, really, the kind of farewell we should all be so lucky to have. Scotty was born in Stillwater in 1969 to incredible parents, Fred and Claudia Montrose. His eyes were bright, and his personality even brighter. On Thursday, as she said goodbye to Scotty, singing "You Are My Sunshine" in his ear, Mimi thanked him for teaching her how to be a mother. Two years after Scotty was born, those lessons came in handy again as the family welcomed Aaron, Ari, and the brothers grew physically and emotionally together. Their relationship was strong, but no one could have imagined the strength of that love, especially over the last several months of Scotty's time here. The boys attended Sepulpa Schools, where Scotty brought light and laughs to everything he did, but especially to band and jazz band. The stories from longtime friends of his school days are enough to keep you laughing for weeks. Friends also shared memories of church camp and how he always made people feel comfortable and welcome. Scotty would graduate from OSU with a degree in hotel and restaurant management, and from there, he was off to beautiful Rhode Island to attend Johnson and Wells University, where he received his graduate degree in culinary arts. His culinary adventures continued throughout his life, and whether cooking with some of the greatest chefs in the world or in a friend's cramped kitchen, Scotty was generous with praise and always curious to learn. His first job out of graduate school was at Sandiston Beach Resort, where he was a banquet chef. Locally, he worked as a chef at Applewood's Restaurant and was a highly sought-after chef for private events around our city. He created his very own line of successful spices and mixes that are still in many of our pantries today, but his last and favorite job was as a personal chef to the family he loved and admired for years. He considered them family and they him. Many of OKC's longtime residents, however, remember his restaurant, Scotty's in Nichols Hills. The food was delicious, and the atmosphere was so comfortable, but it was the relationship with his guests and staff that many will remember. George Guy remembers starting to work for Scotty in the summer of 2000. He said he was, quote, "Just some punk that hopped from job to job." But Scotty saw something in him, sat him down, encouraged him to give him a chance. George agreed and never looked back. He said Scotty started as his boss but became a trusted and loving friend because that's who Scotty was. Simply too many highlights exist to mention in one announcement of Scotty's journey, but we must note his contributions to Edible OKC, Oklahoma Magazine, the Community Education Center at 612, Cookies Thanksgiving in support of other options, and his early morning spots on KUT's Rise and Shine. He was a remarkable son, loving brother, and a fiercely supportive friend, but his pride and his love for his nephews, Connor and Riley Montrose, were simply unmatched. There was not and will never be a more proud uncle. Mentioned their names and their sparkling eyes light up even brighter. Scotty felt so lucky to have Ari's wife, Torita, and his bonus nephews and niece, Cooper and Jaslyn. Scotty asked him to think of him with donations to the Wint House, AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City or 612. He cultivated friendships with the incredible doctors, nurses, and staff at OU who walked him on this journey, and he was so grateful for their knowledge and kindness and tenacity over the last several months. I'd like to close this tribute with some wise words that Scotty shared with us August 24th, 2021. Quote, "Listen to your body. Take seemingly innocent signs that persist as something that can be serious. You don't want cancer, but if it happens to darken your doorstep, you fight like hell. I'll never pass by someone fighting cancer or someone who has survived it. I'll never pass by someone fighting cancer or someone who has survived it. I'll never pass them by again without giving them a pat on the back. I know what you're going through and what you fought so hard for to survive, and I'll always have your back." Thank you for listening to this perspective. He just meant so much to so many of us in Ward two, and I just wanted to take this time to speak to his time here with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward six?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to mention is, you know, just the passing of Enik Kelly Haney over the weekend. I know he had a huge influence over our state, and obviously with us being the state capital, a very specific mark on our city, and just want to express my condolences to his family and just anyone in the community that might be mourning his loss.
You, Ward seven?
Yes, I'd like to express that, too. And I know when we had the opening of the First Americans Museum and a couple of the events, he was, he wheeled on in there to see and be a part of those events. And I just also, I know we had the oldest woman in Oklahoma passed away at the age of 112, and she lived in Guthrie, and just, you know, I just wanted Ms. Thomas, I believe was her name. So just, that's been on my mind since I read that because I did not realize we had a woman by the age of 112 in Oklahoma. But she has fulfilled her mission at that age. And also, I wanted to thank all of those who came to attend the Brockway Lions-Lester envisioning that we had this past Saturday. It was at Ralph Ellison Library for everyone to give their comments about what they would like to see with those two structures. And a lot of great comments, and we had a lot of youth. We had a few youth, our youth council members, were at the first one for Ward seven, and we had one that was definitely at the second one, so grateful that they were there. And also wanted to continue to commend our neighbors, good neighbors, that we had representing and receiving awards, doing some great work within our city and within our wards respectively. And to my council Ward seven winner, Ms. Joyce Willis, and she's doing some really good work in Ward seven. And then we also had a young lady that was honored from Lincoln Terrace for the great work she's doing in her neighborhood. So very, very grateful that there are so many great things and people that are doing the work of community when it comes to what's happening around us. Another thing that happened this past week, which we hadn't been able to do for a couple of years in person, was the 78th Annual simultaneous revival that happens with the Baptist Ministers' Association, and it kicked off on Tuesday. They have noon day and then a late night service, and we've had folks, some pastors from all across the country that were in our city last week to be a part of what's taking place. So again, I know everyone was ready to get back in person, and after a couple of years of doing it by Zoom and virtual, there were quite a few people ready to just be in the place, to be a part of what's taking place. So this is one of the oldest revivals in the country, with it being 78 years young, and I'm hoping that it will get to 100. That's the goal, definitely to get it to 100. And I want to reemphasize, One OKC, there's going to be a One OKC weekend that's actually going to kick off on that Friday, and there will be a State of Northeast Oklahoma City with the elected officials that represent that part of the community and our city. And afterwards, there's going to be on May 7th, the One OKC event, and also incorporating all of the things that we would like to see as far as celebrating of Northeast Oklahoma City and what has become of that. So seven years old, I'm still just in awe that we are celebrating seven years for One OKC. So looking forward to that and hope that those who can and will will be a part of what is happening. And I just want to reemphasize again, as I talked about it earlier with Creston Park and the Northeast duplexes, we want good development. We want healthy development, but it means nothing if you aren't incorporating the people that it's going to impact. And that's where I have the concern, when we aren't including those people that we are directly impacting, to be at the table or to give their input or to understand what they want in these types of situations. Because again, this can, this can be a great development, or it can be something that turns this whole community upside down. And I'd rather us have the prior than the latter of what I've just said and spoken. So I'm looking forward to more conversations and them being more open to speaking to the community pertaining to what they are doing and how we can ensure that these residents are able to come back to be a part of this new growth and this new development. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at item 13 now, Citizens to Be Heard. We have three who have signed up to speak. Susan Rockow. If you'd state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
Susan Rockow, excuse me, 99, of course, I've been sitting here too long, 9900 Forest Glade Drive. Good morning. I'm here today to request the council consider make a couple of amendments to the animal codes to make the city streets and neighborhoods safer. Over the past 23 years, I've walked thousands of miles with my dogs. In fact, I've logged over 1,000 miles just last year. Recently, I became concerned when I learned that the definition of direct control was not limited to dogs being on leashes or tethered. In paragraph 85A5, direct control is defined to include dogs in training. People are taking their dogs on city streets without leashes, stating that dogs are in training, and so it's allowed. For instance, they can put an electronic collar around the dog's neck and use a remote control and try to manage the dog. They may also use voice commands. These methods do not guarantee that the dog can be under full control when restrained. In fact, the worst dog attack I've ever witnessed was when a dog was only under voice control. I'm requesting the city council consider amending paragraph 85A5 to eliminate the use of voice control off-leash training unless authorized when dogs are participating in official City of Oklahoma City organized in sanctioned training showing obedience or field events. The Second Amendment I'm asking the council to consider is regarding Section 839 confinement of dogs required. This section requires a dog be confined on the owner's property by being in a house, behind a fence, or similar closure or on a tether. For many years, Animal Welfare told me that underground and invisible fences were not authorized by the City of Oklahoma City because they did not consider them to be substantial. In 2017, after witnessing all but one of the invisible fences in my neighborhood being breached by the dogs, I notified Animal Welfare. They sent out warning notices to each of the property owners and stated that the underground and/or invisible fences did not meet the confinement requirement. These fences are not substantial. They don't work when electricity is out, when the battery in the dog's collar goes dead, when the fence malfunctions, or what I've experienced, the dog gets agitated by other dogs walking in front of their property, and they break through and come after the dogs in the street.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Loose dogs behind these fences may also be dangerous or to delivery personnel. I'm requesting the city council amend paragraph 839 to add underground and/or invisible fences to not meet this criteria. In summation, it's been my experience that a dog on a leash or tether or behind a substantial physical fence such as stockade, chain link, or wrought iron is contained 100% of the time. Please consider the suggested amendments to Chapter 8 of the municipal code. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Becky Van Poel?
Becky Van Poel, 2649 Southwest 96th Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the seniors from Woodson Senior Center. I attended the meeting last week to close the Woodson Center, and I'm asking you to change the timeline for closing the center. Woodson Center has been open for seniors for over 25 years, and I think they deserve more than three weeks to make a decision and try and rebuild their communities at other facilities. This program is not just a building. It is a community and for the seniors, and it's important to give the seniors and staff time to be able to make arrangements to transition to new facilities. The Southside seniors should not be told that they have to go to, go north to Will Rogers' Senior Center and to stay, in order to stay with their teachers and participate with their community. The Pete White facility has not made an effort to come over and get to know the seniors, explain to them about the policies and the procedures, and it has all been through the Director of Parks and Recreation, and that is not a good policy or way to treat people, especially seniors in our community. I would ask you to delay the May 13 deadline to close the center so that the senior community can be given time to explore options and make decisions. The Boys and Girls Club, we have been told will be using it for the next two years, and so I don't see the big rush in order to move the seniors out in three weeks. They, the Boys and Girls Club do have other options. They can use schools, and they can use the gymnasium area, and they, we could even share the facility, but none of those options have been considered. I would ask the timeline be changed in respect for the seniors who have supported the MAPS program and have been long-term members of our community. As older adults whose lives are in constant change in our society, they need and deserve to have time to process the change in order to make decisions. I ask that you will modify, recommend to the city staff to modify this decision, and would like to discuss alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey Reardon?
Sorry. Joey Reardon, 125 Northwest 9th. ADA scooters and the arts council is what I wrote down. ADA issues. I just found out this past week that we're getting an extra sidewalk on 9th Street. Thank you. Appreciate that. And what I found out is from Broadway to the alleyway, there was an old brick sidewalk there, where they're putting in a new sidewalk. I have bricks from there. Scooters. It's, I keep bringing it up every meeting. When are y'all going to pass some kind of ordinance, one, to get some kind of revenue from the scooter companies, other than just the, the application fee or whatever fee that y'all initially got, when they're making millions and millions of dollars off of the use of their scooters and the fact that they're constantly, people are just constantly just leaving wherever they, they feel like they want to leave them? I understand that that's their business model, but it's not working for the ADA. Seriously, it is not working for the ADA. This morning, coming over here, I had to move 12 different scooters out of the middle of the sidewalk so I could get down the sidewalk. And the arts festival. I talked to Craig this morning, but they've had, they've got at least 32 ADA violations with blocking the sidewalk, whether it's with tables and chairs, whether it's the crosswalks or their tents that they've got up. People can't get down through there, and people with limited sight and stuff like that wouldn't see that stuff until they actually run into it, which, you run into it, you're injured. And every year, I brought this to their attention, and this year, they said, "I'll just listen to what they got to say and keep going." I understand. But yeah, that's, that's the issues that I'm having. But we are getting better with the ADA sidewalks, but we need to do more in the city and not further out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We have an executive session now to discuss item 11AC. There are no more votes. When we return, we will adjourn.